Okay. And Todd, we have a backup tonight, a backup recording tonight. Which is? Which is this little thing sitting here.
Like the GoPro thing?
It's like a GoPro. She's trying to show off. Who made it to the events yesterday?
Some events yesterday, not many events.
It was pretty mystic.
Hot. I made the suggestion that Todd should sit in the dunk tank. That would increase participation. Of course, joking.
I heard that's pretty frightening, actually. I have to do that.
You're saying the council members would sit in the dunk tank?
Or the mayor.
Yeah, I saw Bill Martin, so now we get the dunk tank. I don't think you remember. Alright, so we have a court here, so let's call the June 5th meeting of the Planning Commission to order 7:07. And today, we have all members of the Planning Commission present, except for Adam Crum. And we have Chloe Moore here from the Denver County Planning Commission. We have three members of the public attendants and two visiting via Zoom. And Kevin Walsh from zoning enforcement and building enforcement official on Zoom. So, let's get started. Today, we, this is gonna be one of our most thrilling meetings ever, because we're talking about zoning today. But first, in terms of chairs update, the only update I have, which is somewhat relating to the zoning, is, I need to open this up, but I received one minute correspondence from Councilmember Gene Barak, which I will read to you as soon as I can find it. Basically, asking us to consider edits, I'm sorry I didn't email these to you guys, but to consider edits on the Saldau bike requirement amendments, which we'll discuss later, to add phraseology about that long-term bicycle spaces can be located in a secure non-public parking garage. And that, and that a new subsection, which is talking about two-tier bike racks, which is, are in the amendments that we considered today, have some edits to include lift-assisted bike racks and that they have to have adequate access in P E cities. So we received correspondence from Gene about that. So we will bring that up again when we get to that issue. If that's the only thing I have to report, so we can...
Touch point to very good balance.
Yeah.
Based on conversations from the last couple of Planning Commission meetings, where there were questions about downtown business development, I did inquire with our Director of Commerce if he wanted to come out and do a walk-in. Our group followed up that they were interested. And so, the Interim Borough Manager, Alan Zardo, and I know Michael already expressed interest in attending, Craig Rich is attending. Any plan, it's gonna be during the day, Tuesday, the 25th, 9:00 a.m. Our Director of Commerce and one of his staff members is gonna come meet at Borough Hall, chat a little bit. We're just gonna walk down Haverford Avenue and back. People have the opportunity to ask him any questions about supporting this small local business district. His background is in small burrows in Pennsylvania. He used to work for the Pennsylvania Downtown Center and, and, and Commerce. So, if any Planning Commission members or elected officials or members of the number of business association would like to come, that's an automatic yes, you could come. You can ask Alan to make the details. If you're not in one of those groups and you're watching the recording or listening to this and wanna come, I'd say just ask Alan at the Borough, if that's okay. Probably does, so. Tuesday, 25th, 9:00 a.m., meeting here.
Alright, that's really great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And would you mind directly letting Adam come though? I think you...
Yes, yeah, me and my staff should. Yeah, I will do that.
Okay, so we'll move to approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve, from June 5th and June 14th. June 5th, we had our last meeting, but we actually did it. So, excited about what was going on. June 14th, we forgot to approve our minutes. And then we now have minutes from June 14th. So first I'll ask, in terms of the June 5th minutes, does anyone have any comments or corrections, clarifications they would like to make? We did get some from Chloe, and those were the minutes that I forwarded. You're the ones that reflected Chloe's changes. Are there any other further comments or questions? Okay, motion to approve the minutes as submitted by Michael Jim Cornwell. 30 seconds, 20 seconds. And all in favor of approving the minutes as submitted?
At the time.
Any opposed? Okay, so they are approved as submitted and amended by Chloe, so we'll get those posted. And then...
So, a quick question, for the purposes of just accurately reflecting things, since Adam is out, does that mean that Jennifer is voting as the alternate?
Oh, that's a good question. I believe that would be the case. Let's...
Congratulations.
Let's back up a step and acknowledge that tonight, since Adam has excused, we have alternate Jennifer here, who will then be seated as a voting member. Motion, so congratulations. If that comes with information package.
It looks such a...
A waiver for, a liability for. When I became a voting member, I asked Mayor Gray if he'd give me a badge. And Snarle said, "Get out of here." There's no badge, we can't give it. But otherwise, then, I'm glad you'll be able to turn this up. So, okay, so in terms of the minutes, June 14th minutes, any comments or corrections? Adam, excuse me, Michael, I made a few edits to what you gave, so a little different than what you submitted to us. Any comments or questions? All in favor of approving the June 14th minutes as circulated?
Fine.
Any opposed? Okay, alright, so minutes are approved. So, we have potentially three zoning update topics on our calendar tonight. And I sent you all, I tried to explain them to you in a message I sent earlier this week. Three things on our plate are consideration of the various code amendments, 5A, 5P, green zoning, some corrections to green zoning and the Saldau into conformance with each other, that we discussed last time, in which council voted to advertise at its last meeting. And so you all have a draft of that. We've received written comments from Michael, from Jennifer, from MCPC. And so we'll, we'll try and go through those. And our role as usual is to make a recommendation to council, whether or not the zoning amendment as advertised should be, should be approved, which is one of our few statutory roles. The second topic is to further consider the dispersion of uses issue. The reason for that is, I sat down to write a letter to Borough Council summarizing our thinking about that, and I realized that it's two meetings in which we discussed this, we came up with conflicting recommendations. And therefore, I think we need to clarify those things, so I can write a letter to council explaining our recommendations on the dispersion, dispersal of uses. And then if we have time, we can tack back and continue talking about future zoning revisions, the next round revisions, with a focus on, I think we've, we've been talking a lot about the nature of definitions of different uses and different kinds of uses that are permitted in different areas, particularly the 5A district. And it seemed like focusing on what kind of use is allowed in what areas of the 5A district is probably the best use of our time. And then Chloe can kind of wordsmith definitions and so forth. And so Chloe has provided us with a cheat sheet about what uses are allowed where. Second topic, if we have time, might be to discuss the things we have in our code already, which pertain to the sizes of commercial uses. And discuss whether we're comfortable with what we have in our code and whether we need to look at that more closely. So that would be the agenda tonight. Any questions about that? It's a lot complicated stuff. So we'll start with the zoning revisions that council is considering. I will say, after I received MCPC's letter, read it, I did contact this solicitor and I asked if he would prefer to consider revisions in re-advertising the ordinance or voting on the ordinance as it is and then creating a fix-up or cleanup ordinance subsequent to that. And he said he revised, he, excuse me, he told me that he's reviewed the MCPC letter and doesn't think there's anything in there that is so serious that it couldn't be improved, it couldn't be addressed through a subsequent cleanup revision to the zoning code. So the vote, the solicitor's strategy would be to ask council to vote on what was presented, and then if there are any corrections that we find or corrections based on MCPC's letter, to advertise a subsequent ordinance with corrections. So I thought you should know that that was his strategy. I think our choices are, one, we can, you know, in framing a recommendation, we can recommend the ordinance as it is. We can recommend the ordinance with understanding that certain changes will be made to clean it up. We can recommend that the ordinance as presented should not be approved, but that a substitute with corrections should be re-advertised. And third, if there are aspects of it that you simply don't agree with, you could vote not to recommend it. It's just not a good thing to do. So I think we have a number of choices in front of us, in terms of how to proceed. But what I'd like to, so does anyone have any questions about that? So what I'd like to do then is review the comments we've received and sort of go through them, flag them, see what they are, and then pause on ones that we feel might require a little more discussion. And because the ones that we received from our colleagues here are a little more straightforward, I think MCPC's actually getting into some complicated discussions. I'd like to start with the comments that Jennifer, Michael submitted. And so, let's see if, see if there are things there that you feel, or how you'd like to address the things that people like. And I should stop, I should pause and say, before we do this, has anyone else reviewed to the extent that you have, a list of things you'd like to talk about in regard to this amendment? Alright. So Jennifer, Michael, if you don't mind, I've just highlighted the things in your letters and I'll just go over them quickly, in case you can't view. But if you feel I'm not really characterized your comment correctly, just please, please stop it. So the first comment from Jennifer has to do with are the green building ordinance, section of the ordinance, language that relates to backup generators. You recall, we agreed that while we would like green buildings to not have, to not be powered by fossil fuel, we thought that an emergency generator is appropriate. The language says backup emergency generators utilizing fossil fuels shall be permitted if the electrical grid to which the building is connected may be subject to power outages. Comment being, how would one define this? Aren't all power grids technically subject to power outages? So it sounds like language that ought to be cleaned up. I don't know that we need to work with it right now, but I just wanted to flag back and see if everyone agreed that that language ought to be cleaned up.
Just always hope for a perfect energy grid.
Todd, can I please make a request?
Sure.
Before we dive into these sections, could you just cite the section and like the number? Yeah, that would be, okay.
Are you following it on your screen?
Yeah.
So that was section, I'm just being polite.
J.
Just checking to see if anyone's...
That's your question of the evening.
Alright, the next comment is in, it's in the definitions, which is section L. L, definition of side is currently proposed any exterior structural walls of the building. Comment being, this may be an overly specific comment, but technically not. All exterior walls are structural. Could it be defined as an exterior facing wall of the building? To defer to the people here who design walls.
Enclosing would be a word you would use, or envelope?
I feel like there was a reason someone wanted structural walls rather than...
Do we define structural?
Structural is misused many, 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 many times. It's endemic.
I mean, is the question whether glass is considered, you know?
The question is, is the word structural a necessary qualifier here?
Can we define the word structural anywhere in the code?
I doubt it, it's whatever the common reading might be.
How many definitions is different than the technical definition?
The former definition was the exterior wall or walls of a building located at or near a transit line. So this is to clean that up and just say, you know, the exterior walls of a building.
I agree with Jennifer calling it a facing wall, because we use that term all the time, like the outside face of exterior wall, the inside face of exterior wall defines the exterior, defines the interior. And the outside face facing the street makes, makes sense. Kevin here, you are being, joining us.
I'm here, I'm looking through my notes for Chloe real quick. I'll try and get back to you guys as quickly as I can.
It sounds like it should be amended, and Jennifer's note and your endorsement of her notes sound like the direction to go there.
Yeah.
Okay, Kevin, you come up and then just hop in, we're gonna move on. Section M, M5, has to do with, now this, this was actually an amendment that came from council, not something we proposed, which was to, this has to do with the widths of vestibules or lobbies that front Haverford Avenue, or that front piece of street in the 5A district. And I believe, I don't know for sure what we had there before.
It was 12.
No way, it was 12.
It was 12.
And council's concern was that was too wide for Haverford Avenue.
For a lobby.
That that would disrupt the continuity of the streets game to have a 12-foot wide lobby. And it was, it was sort of interesting, they dickered for a while on what that number should be and wound up with 4. I was at the meeting and said I was not comfortable with that number, but they voted in the back anyway. So, I thought maybe 12 is too big, but 4 is too small. Because you can't like put a door in the size of a door. The door can't open, and have a gym, I mean, it's just not workable. So, that was flagged by Jennifer, whose note says, "With the 2017 Accessible Building Code, 4 feet may not be sufficient space for buildings ADA units. 5-foot clearance may be required." So what, so first of all, I assume everyone, does everyone feel it should be changed? Is 4 feet?
4 feet is too small. 12 is too big.
Does anybody have technical insight to what the minimum could be from functionality and code, other code requirements?
Well, if you had a pair of doors.
Well, I think she's thinking maybe one door.
I guess if you're going for like a mixed-use space though, and that's your entrance to another commercial area, isn't that a mixtension of the commercial space above, even if that commercial space is residential? So, I mean, when you start factoring in like the number of units and you're talking mailboxes, plus door, plus turn radius, if it's more than X number of units, you need an elevator, so clearances... So the second, I think the second part of that question was kind of like, how deep does that 4 feet carry? Is it for the first 5 feet of the building and then you can have as big a lobby as you want? Or is it 4 feet for the entire length of the...
There's so many other factors that are gonna come into this, not the least of which is clearances for accessibility.
Right.
It's very, very hard and arbitrary to try to, you know, screw it down to the minimum width.
Yeah, so let's turn around. If 12 is too wide, what is a comfortable maximum? Would largely address the kind of...
A number like 8.
But isn't, isn't the problem that we don't want wide lobbies facing the street? Is that the issue?
It isn't the problem, but we can't have a rule that makes a lobby so small.
But why can't we say the lobby's gotta be internal to the building? I mean, you can have a narrower entrance that leads into a wider lobby. I mean, I don't think any of us wants to seat greater than 4-foot wide entrance to a, to a building along, in the 5A district. It would just be out of place, out of character. I mean, if you look, if you walk down Haverford Avenue, all the entrances to the apartments are 3-foot wide door and a stair that goes up. And I understand the issue with accessibility, but take people inside to an elevator? It's kind of...
The new... The new set is still gonna require 66 inches for the largest turn radius. So you need at least 5'6".
Inside though.
Clear, clear dimension in front of the door, like in, right inside of the door. You have to provide a clearance.
Well, maybe then we need to have entrances on the backside of the buildings. I mean, you can have an accessible entrance on another facade.
Unless you can't have access.
Why not?
The accessible entrance just got to be...
Near the parking, which isn't behind the building.
It's also for visitation. It's not just for residents, it's for visitors.
We're talking about Haverford Avenue, very small area of downtown.
You're talking about the ADA here.
I know, but if we're talking about allowing apartments along Haverford Avenue, that's the beginning of the problem.
Would it solve it, because clearly they, we had made recommendations, we as a group, we had made recommendations that they weren't necessarily comfortable with. So is it at this point enough to recommend that they, if they wanna set a standard, then they set a standard that's compliant with the ADA?
Who, the council?
Council.
Well, they're looking to us for that expertise. And we're supposed to... Look, I, I would like to stipulate, if we need to vote on this, we will. We already have a code, we passed it like two or three years ago, that says having doors on Haverford Avenue is a good thing, because it adds to the traffic coming in on the street and the complexity of the street to have the doors. Now, I don't wanna open that up unless, I mean, if we have to, I'd like to sort of reassert that we all agree, at least the majority of us agree on that, because I don't wanna open up the question of whether there should be residential doors in Haverford unless there's enough people who disagree with that. We sort of stipulate that we have that in the code for a reason and we kind of generally agree there should be residential doors in Haverford Avenue. Okay, and then so the only question is, what is a better standard than 4 feet? That will.
Why can't you say something's the effective, you know, lobby shall be a minimal width consistent with the requirements of the ADA?
Certainly you can say that, but I think there was a desire to put in a maximum.
Okay, and shall be no, no more than, make up a number, 8 feet, 6 feet?
That's why I'm asking you guys, you don't have to, what's the smallest maximum you think could be lived with? That would mean over 12.
Single door, current ADA, 5-foot turn radius, that doesn't take into account? If you have mailboxes directly inside the door, 8 feet clear is probably more than needed? Like you could probably go with 6. I do question though if the wording needs to include how deep into the building that width needs to be maintained before it could get wider?
I'm just, I'm uncomfortable with trying to put something like this into a zoning code. It's, it has, and Kevin can weigh in on this, but it seems it has much more to do with the building code and the review of the, of the compliance with the building code requirements, when you start getting into stuff like that.
To answer your question, the way the code is written is, this width applies for 40 feet. Because we don't want that to happen, we don't want someone just going 3 feet, even if they have a big lobby and you've got no retail space in Haverford Avenue.
Right.
So the preference is to have retail space in Haverford Avenue, not to have like a secret entry to a, you know, a gym in Haverford Avenue.
I'm just trying to take into account, like, as the code is expanding, if another project comes up that is going to require internal bike storage, baggage storage, et cetera, like where do you put that if your maximum width of ground floor space? Because would you consider those rooms an extension of the lobby?
Well, yeah, I mean, that might mean you have to have it, I don't know, that might have to... That's why we had 12 feet, to begin with, you know, for these things.
12 is too much, Todd, I think that's not consistent with maxing out the retail.
I really struggle with that.
I'm wondering if it should be a minimum instead of a maximum? Because the question in my mind is, what, who's gonna build something and wanna give more to a lobby and less to runnable space? Like I think that the tendency would be to make it as small as possible. I don't think they're gonna say bigger, you know, we want it bigger, unless it's a grand entrance, but we're talking about entrance to a second-floor dwelling. I think maybe we just pare it down to 6 to 8 foot minimum.
Well, again, why can't we say something to the effect of, "The width of a lobby adjacent to the street shall not exceed the, the minimum dimension required, required by the ADA and applicable building codes," and just leave it at that? That's your maximum, you should, you will not exceed what the building code requires.
I think that's wise. Is that, is that a, an indisputable factor? Is that something that's up to interpretation?
Well, it's certainly up for review by the, by the building code inspector, by, by the planning reviewer, but that's, you know, I think that's indisputable. It's, you know, you have, you have those various things you have in a lobby, whether it's the doors and the clearances around the doors, you know, whether you have mailboxes or elevators, and you have code requirements, you know, that are in both the zoning code and the ADA, that tells you what kind of clearances you need. So you're saying, you know, the lobby will not exceed the requirements of those clearances? So call it a day.
The other thing is, the furbage is not specific to Haverford, it's specific to all of 5A. So do we need to separate it out and have a line that is specific to what is allowed facing Haverford Avenue versus what would be allowed facing a different street? Because I think that the opinion, the strongest opinion, right, is for the entrances that are specific to the street and of a commercial corridor versus what's happening off of a courtyard or a side street that is separate from, I mean, separate from...
Okay, even if we agreed that, I would still have to come up with a number for Haverford Avenue.
I think, I mean, 8 feet or less for the, but I don't think that 40 feet is... 8 feet would, 8 feet would allow you to have, meet all of the clearances currently.
Following, following that, I have to reiterate, how many entrances to apartments do we want on Haverford Avenue? I don't understand, I mean, you can have entrances on the back. It's not, it's not saying it's a rear yard. It could be the front entrance to an apartment building off the parking lot. I don't understand.
But that's only specific to that side of Haverford Avenue, whereas the properties on the other side don't all have back entrance accessibility.
But they're existing conditions. I'm talking about any new apartment building, you shouldn't be allowing furbage on Haverford, because those are furbages for retail.
We just agreed, I'm not gonna bring that up.
Well, I'm voting against it then, because that's absolutely inappropriate.
We can't assume everything, read...
I think we have... I think we have to in this case, it's Haverford Avenue.
I'm not going to have a conversation about that.
I'm sorry, it's an important conversation.
Heidi, we discussed it, we did it a few years ago, we can't bring it up.
We did not discuss entrances on Haverford Avenue. Entrances to apartment lobbies.
I don't think just any other desire on the commission to talk about whether there should be doors on Haverford Avenue.
That's a totally different subject, doors to retail space.
Doors to residential space, so I think we need to move on, Heidi. So, what was your comment?
I just wanted to, Dave's comment about directly referencing the ADA might be wise, because if it changes, then it's accounted for. I don't think it would go greater than eight, so that might be reasonable and fair. But more importantly, what I, the point I would like to raise is, I think technical definitions are very important here, that we define what constitutes a vestibule or lobby, what is included, what is not included.
It was, it's a word in their vision that we previously talked about, whether it's any... So residential uses are only allowed on the second and third floors, however, you have to be able to get to them, and all of those things to get to them or that go with them are accessory to residential. The desire was to limit how much space that could take up on the first floor. So any uses accessory to the dwelling units.
Right.
That that could include, look at the other language, but I think that would make sense.
While I'm closely looking at it, from a code enforcement point of view, is it easier for you, is it better for you to have like a strict number, like eight, or is it better for the code to say?
All right, so the way I was asked to approach this was based on essentially a dwelling unit defined a minimum, was based on a dwelling unit that was going up directly to a second floor or third floor single dwelling unit essentially, and that's just 32 inches, that's what the building code required. That's the clear space needed in a residential building, in the building code to get up a stairway, 32 inches. That's obviously smaller than what we're looking for. If we're looking for stairs to go up to multiple units or a common area, then it would be based on the total number of occupants, so it's a factor of 0.3 per occupant, so that gets kind of convoluted, where I'd have to know how many occupants were in the building. That's the way I was looking to approach it. I mean, it'd be easier for me in the zoning code to know what a maximum number is, to be honest with you. I think when I get into zoning phase, it would be impossible for me to calculate the total number of occupants. So for me, it's 32 inches minimum, but it'd be helpful if I had a maximum.
But Kevin, it's just not a matter of the stairway width. I mean, you have a door, which presumably is 36 inches, unless the code is changed, on the push side of the door, you need 12 inches clearance, so that gets us to 46 inches.
Also for...
Well, you can measure from the inside of the frame over to 12 inches. So, but I mean, that, so unless I'm remembering the coding correctly, it goes beyond just the stairway width.
Right, so we're looking at what is the maximum width of the lobby, the exterior door? So that's the way the lobby is calculated. I'm looking at it strictly from the furloughed point. So the door on the exterior could be 32, that's the clear width, so yeah, you probably have a 36-inch door, right? But that 48 inches is not from the inside, so once you get inside, yes, the lobby would expand, but 12 inches of that would be exterior wall next to the door. I don't know if that makes sense.
Does this definition include an elevator?
So we had proposed a previous...
These are not going to be reasonable, these don't necessarily require elevators.
What can you say?
We had discussed this previously, and I have the language that we came up with before, which says, dwelling units are allowed on the second and third floors only. On the ground floor, the first 40 feet in depth from the front facade shall not contain any uses accessory to the dwelling units except for an entrance and circulation area, parentheses, vestibule, lobby, stairwell, elevators, et cetera, with a maximum of 12 feet in width. That was the language we previously had proposed.
So then, if you factor in an elevator, okay, 12 feet starts to become more of a reasonable number. And I think we discussed this, actually.
We discussed this, the change that I'm talking about in the context of 14.
So 14, yeah.
Right.
It would be relevant.
Question is, can there be, is there a feasible lesser standard for Haverford Avenue? Because they're going to write in the code at four feet, so the question is, do we have a better number than that?
Well, maybe you exclude...
Four feet is clearly not...
Okay, so the question is, do we have a better number than that?
Can we, I know this is a little bit absurd, but it, understanding that we won't necessarily hit the right number, is it possible for us to pick an arbitrary number and then make an ancillary unofficial recommendation that they revisit? There's been comments that maybe it doesn't even need to be in the zoning code and is better regulated through our, and we can discuss those types of things, but put something that's more reasonable in there for now, apply it for them that there are broader things here, and then kind of revisit the depths of that conversation in the future, or is that...
It's a possibility, but we still need to know what to put in there.
Well, eight feet was mentioned multiple times, I don't know what the number is.
I think the math works for specifically an entrance on Haverford at six, but I still feel that there should be a separate definition for entrances not on Haverford. If, because the language is for all of 5A, which includes multiple parcels with entrances not on Haverford.
Is that a big compromise, for now, six feet above Haverford and 12 feet everywhere else?
It should never have to be 12 feet, that's way too much.
But if you're doing a large multifamily...
Like the Elm, like the Elm, for example, which has a fairly elaborate lobby.
The Elm, by the way, this only applies to mixed-use buildings, so the Elm isn't part of it, so they're allowed.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
I'll go back to what I said, I don't think, I don't think we should be putting a specific dimension in, and I think the language that I said previously covers it.
Okay, well, the zoning officer and council have requested a specific number, so...
Do you want to, I don't, Jennifer, comment of like, so what if it's six feet, is that six feet all the way 40 feet back? Or do you want to consider like six feet for the first, you know, 10 feet back from the front of the building, and then it can widen out to 12 feet?
I think if it was six feet, you'd exclude...
Using the zoning code, this is crazy.
You'd have to exclude the elevator shafts. Right, like elevators and accessory rooms as required, and the balance of the zoning code could help be a factor in that.
Isn't the real question here, how much of the facade along Haverford Avenue wants to be given over to an entrance to an apartment upstairs? And I would say the minimum number is the correct number. And I don't care if there's a Roman bath inside the building to accommodate elevator shafts and everything else.
It's a primitive use.
I don't, well, we'll have to talk to...
I'm not telling what you're saying, though.
I'm saying, all we need to do is to decide how much of the facade along Haverford Avenue do we want to give over in perpetuity to an entrance, to an apartment use?
Right, and we know we have them like in the three-foot range, and they probably have to be a little bigger.
They don't have to be as big as eight. You can certainly get away with six and you'd still be generous. That's the number I think we should decide.
Six, eight, six.
Any six is fine, but I still think that there should be a larger allowance not on everything.
Right, right, for mixed-use buildings.
Yeah.
Okay, so can anyone, most of us land there, since we don't have 12 feet elsewhere?
So you know where to move along?
Yes. Good, that's what, that's what...
Rather than everywhere elsewhere, could we specify it to multifamily dwelling?
This is only about multifamily.
Just mixing, it's only that's it. Oh, um...
Apartment buildings, they can, the whole ground can get up, because it's an apartment building.
Right. Okay, okay, yeah.
All right, we'll move on then. Well, we have to really just focus on there as much as we can. I mean, this is just like correcting little things in the code, not rewriting the whole, if we want to reopen questions, we can do that some other time. I'm going to try and skip to things. Okay, in the design requirements for the SADA, for the SADA, for, that we would put in the SADA, not requirements, but guidelines we would put in the SADA, the following materials should that be used on any surface visible from the street, aluminum siding, vinyl siding. The question is, is the intention for all metal siding to be prohibited, or just aluminum?
Was the requirement to not have that look like final lap siding, or was the attempt to...
Did you read that line, would you guess?
Yeah, so this is in the, this is proposed in the SADA, where we have design requirements to create variety along the facade, so the vertical sections shall be differentiated, vertical sections shall be differentiated from the code, excuse me, I'm running one. The following materials shall not be used on any surface visible from the street, aluminum siding, vinyl siding. The question is, is the intention for all metal siding to be prohibited, or just aluminum?
Well, that's a good point, because there is also, there is steel, I mean...
And there are metal panels, zinc, aluminum, steel, and the metal panel thing is getting into solar facades.
I think we'll, and there is metal and vinyl not aluminum required.
What is Jim Stakes going to do, you know, have quilted stainless facade?
Jim Stakes?
Yeah.
Still stands out, should be a little bit...
And this is definitely, I'm going to name Frank Gehry from Shortlist.
That's what Frank was saying.
Are you struggling, because the style of, like, the vinyl, I understood the aluminum felt specific, and so if it was like very specific to aluminum siding, I'd be okay with... Because like, the style of a lot of the other metal panels that are on the market are identical to fiber cement panel, which are identical to other composite-based materials. So is it, is it specific to like the...
I know, when we read that, I don't think we thought it out to that degree, so I guess the question is, is that word, what we meant?
What we meant was, we didn't want it to look like house siding.
Lap siding.
We didn't want it to look like fake claverts. Right, which is what everything in Hardie Klein looks like. It's an attempt to replicate claverts, like we were in Williamsburg.
Right.
So...
Is there other language to be used? To achieve that intent, or is it too specific?
I mean, why don't you want claverts on a commercial street? Well, because they're not durable, just one reason. They'll get, they'll get the tar beaten out of them in short order, people will lean bikes against them, people will deface them, curve their initials in them. That's what typically, street-facing facades in commercial sounds are, are masonry of some sort. And that's what we really had in our hearts when we went down that road.
So remember, since this is in the SADA, there's a little more flexibility. If Frank Gehry's involved, you know, you could, you know, maybe that's all right. But as a general rule, this gets into Dave's comment from our last meeting. You know, if you have a crummy designer, net rules are going to help you, if you're a great designer, net rules are necessary, but you know, then we're out of business, because we write rules, so...
Crummy rules, I find.
So perhaps, you know, we could, we could strike this, we could clarify it, we could say, no, aluminum is well meant, when we made this up last month. Is there a better way of saying what you're saying, Jim, that can be put in here?
Is it like the lap siding char, like, style? So could the definition just be no lap siding, or similar profile?
Well, you know, we've recently got buildings that have shingles outside facing.
But if this, yeah, I guess alternatively, if this is in a, in an area where we're going to be reviewing the final product before it goes into permitting, I think it's safe anyway. Does that allow us to let people come to us with kind of more open-ended options, and then we...
I think we should say something that reflects the desire for the durability one would expect of a facade treatment in commercial...
I don't think it's only a matter of durability, I think it's a matter of an appropriate...
I'm trying to get to a way to say it should be masonry or...
Sure, you know, just to grist for the mill, that there are historic districts that say you can only use fiber cement, or if you want lap siding, shingles, or vertical board and batten type look, style, whatever you want to call it, that does exist for other historic districts. I'm not suggesting that it's good, or we shouldn't adopt that, but it just, it has been treated that way, which eliminates aluminum, which eliminates vinyl. But it categorizes shingles, lap siding, and vertical board and batten as a, as an element.
Beautiful. You covered some areas there.
That method of attachment, you know, like, some people call clapboard, lap siding, shingles, they're all, they're similar in what they're trying to achieve. So if we...
Is there a material expected longevity, something that we could incorporate into this? I mean, you know, durability, I mean, Jim said durability.
Hardy is a 30-year warranty. I'm not an advocate, I'm not a salesperson for Hardy Board, I don't... It's all replicating something that's more authentic, which is wood. It's like you're building with cement in the look of wood, or, yeah. I don't know, so...
And are we talking about the first floor, what above?
It says, any surface visible from the street.
Yeah.
No, what is it?
Any following materials should not be used on any surface visible from the street.
Visible from the street?
Yeah, so the back is okay.
That covers a lot of the side of the front. I was going to say, what's the preventism saying, that any material within three feet of grade must be masonry?
Nothing, you can say that if you want, I mean, you, collectively, I mean, you can say it too, but you have to all agree, but I think it would be okay to say that.
First stories, I mean, we used to have that in our zoning code. Masonry first stories, and all structures in the borough.
I was, I had been thinking that, and then I pulled up the Street View, and there are, I don't know, at least a third of Haverford currently does not have masonry on the ground floor, so if the intention is to try to maintain a specific feel, are we actually making designers design cookie cutter buildings?
Is that because of glass, or what?
No, the whole round from McShay's down to the dance studio is not masonry at the ground floor. And it's, I mean, it has large storefront, but it also has just like wood siding the full height of the building.
All right, well, I feel...
Can I, one, just one last, I think actually the masonry first floor makes sense in a major way. I, I think actually the masonry first floor makes sense in a major way, considering our stormwater management problem. Because if you wanna put wood there and you're concerned about the longevity of your structure and we haven't solved this stormwater management on ever, which is sometimes unruly, I think masonry is a good idea.
I think for today's purpose, we sort of have to, I don't know if we're gonna get to an answer tonight, but it sounds like something better is somewhere in the mix. So I think in the kind of, sort of do no harm, we probably just need to leave it right. I'm wondering if the harm is actually a better resource case. Is this something the harm could be prepared to make a recognition of? I don't know if it's.
Always prepared.
Pardon me?
Always prepared.
Well, you know, we are talking about new construction.
I know, I know, but I know.
Well, we're only talking in this specific thing about new construction. It doesn't comply with the building.
That's longer than 65 feet.
Right, which is probably gonna mean most new construction.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying the harm is because the harm might be a better place to focus on.
Material.
The materiality of buildings than, than deploying planning condition. But I think for now, we'll sort of, we'll, we'll have to flag that that's something that could be worked on. We're not gonna get out of that. Okay, so I'll go to Michael's comments, which are recent. Just pick up the ones that are critical. So there's one very critical comment that Michael made. This is in section M, item four, which is section 502, 502 H3. That's the mixed use design of mixed-use buildings. The proposed code says, specific properties facing Hartford Avenue when east side of North Norbert Avenue in the finance zone district, maximum width of the front facade at frontage line of 65 feet, except for corner properties, that means our avenue to which the maximum shall be 100 feet or except if an alternative maximum width is approved as part of conditional use approval pursuant to section 501 C8. And Michael's comment is, and Bob, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We were gonna move down to the SADO, but conditional use, right?
It's tough. Well, I talked to a solicitor about this as I saw that today. It looks like that was just an oversight when the Direct Line Council cleaned up what they advertised. They missed this cross-reference.
Right.
So that this reference to a conditional use would either go away or should be substituted to reference the fact that these provisions are now in your SADO.
Right, that's what happened, right, so it may go flagged. So that's a glitch as well. Part of what we'll have to cover. This has, next, is on section R, passive green building. The accessory green building bonus standards, 5A B C. A voluntary restrictive covenant drafted to satisfy the request of the solicitor shall be filed on record against the property with the opposite of the date of the government cunning that will restrict redevelopment of the property with removal of conditions required for green building bonus and unless authorized by the borough. And the comment says this reads like restrictive covenant would require homeowner to give up their redevelopment rights broadly for participating in property, for participating in property. So I think what you're saying is that that's written a little too broadly, perhaps?
That was just the way I read it. And this is specifically for the ADU.
Yeah.
Green building bonus, but because it said that the restrictive covenant will restrict redevelopment of the property or the removal of conditions unless authorized by the Borough Council. The way I initially read that was you need to get Borough Council to sign off for the removal of conditions or for redevelopment of the property generally.
Right.
And maybe that's not like, maybe I was just reading that wrong. That was the way I read that. And so that's why I flagged it to say like, are we gonna have restricted covenants where, you know, I wanted to have an ADU and now I'm like giving Borough Council the ability to like say yay or nay if I wanna do something with my house later?
So the genus, the reason for this is, it is, it's the solicitor's attempt to create an enforcement mechanism for properties to take advantage of green building. If you do that, you have a covenant placed against your property, which says you, then you will maintain that, that green building infrastructure. Because of the benefit you received is permanent, so the green building infrastructure needs to be permanent.
But if you're gonna be potentially demoing an entire structure, right? Which just theoretically, if you're a homeowner, you're going through that, that's assuming you've met all of the requirements of the historic ordinance and whatnot. Then you're resetting from zero.
Right.
Right, so you might have another restrictive covenant if you wanna take advantage of this program again. But you've actually, I mean, you're, you're ending the benefit of it because you're, you're clearing the lot in that hypothetical scenario.
Right.
So why, why does, why do you, does theoretically the Borough Council get to say no? Like, well, you've gone through all, everything else, but now that we have a right under a restrictive covenant, you know, we can decide whether to do that or not. It just, it seemed odd.
You know, it's tough because this is nothing that came from us, right? This is, you know, our intent was to add to the borough about the enforcement mechanism. So this is, this is what they gave us.
Yeah, and maybe that's not, maybe I'm just reading that, Kevin might be able to speak. It might be as simple as Kevin saying like, actually, that's not the way I read that.
Kevin, do you have any thoughts about this particular aspect? Section R on page 14. This, maybe stuff away from there.
Yes, sorry, I was, I was a stuck, I was pretty deep in the email with Chloe for the facade. Sorry, could you repeat the?
What? I can't remember, section R, the green building. Section R, 5C, which has to do with voluntary restrictive covenant, which basically requires a property owner to retain the green building, you know, infrastructure or whatever it is they're doing with green building for the perpetuity of the, of the property. The language, the language in the, in the text doesn't seem right. Do you have any insight into this language?
None at all. I, I have a feeling John maybe copied and took that from another municipality, honestly.
Okay, so I think, I think we're not gonna solve this tonight, but I'm gonna pose a question. So I think what, what John is, is trying to say is, is that if,
I think it's.
What he wants is, what he really wants is, I remember discussing this in our staff meeting, Kevin. If the property's, like, suppose the property's sold and the new owner comes in and the owner says, I don't wanna buy, you know, pay renewable wind. That's too expensive. I'm gonna go and buy regular energy, you know? They wanna have some way of enforcing that. I'm not, I'm not sure this, I'm not sure how this gets with that. But I think that's the intent that we want, right? Is to, is to make sure that the decision to enter into these agreements, whether it's using renewable energy generated on site or buying renewable energy on the market or entering the community choice program is binding on all future property owners, right?
I think it's simple enough then to just say that they can restrict the removal of the conditions. And then the conditions or the restrictive covenant they carry forward on the property.
Right.
And the borough has the, the ability to say whether or not you're released from those conditions.
Right. See, so I think you're right. If someone's redeveloping, that's just a reset. You get to start over and decide what. If you wanna redevelop your property just to get out of buying wind energy? James, that's, that's a pretty expensive way to get out of buying wind energy. So I think we need to check with the solicitor on that. I think what we can do is communicate what we think our intent is and see if the language.
Yeah.
The, the next one is section AA. Maybe you flagged this too. I think it's related to the earlier point about getting straight. Let's see the SADO, let's see the zoning code. It's 1616.
That's the same, it's the same one. It's just I flagged it in with parts, but it's the same thing that you just covered of. If we put the, this section in the SADO, but then we still have a 65-foot building with requirement of zoning code, then we haven't actually solved for that issue because the zoning code is still going to control.
So what, what John, I believe what John's gonna propose is, is to add a tag along to your, you've got any sense in the previous, the 502 H3, I think it was? To say unless you're developing in accordance with section, you know, just above your site. The, the, I think the intent is to make sure if you're doing that, that controls. Otherwise, if you're not developing in accordance with that SADO section, your zoning code controls.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's just a.
Just a word clarification, I assume.
Okay. Okay, I skipped some things. Michael, turn it for you guys. Is that okay? So we'll move on then. The last comments before we get to MCPC. I have one or two, and then there's another thing that council. I think this is a technical thing. This is on page 12, section M, and it's Roman numeral, Roman numeral six, permitted frontage types. So basically what we're saying, currently court guards are not allowed on Hartford Avenue, right? But the idea here is to allow court guard if it goes through to provide access to the parking or the rear, or the property. And so what John Walco is proposing for the frontage types. So 500, 502, H16 refers to the rules for mixed-use buildings. So this applies to mixed-use buildings. Permitted frontage types, shopyard, court, shopfront, courtyard, terrace, except courtyard and terrace are not permitted on Hartford Avenue frontages unless the courtyard provides, provides access to rear parking. So that's a little, the wording's a little quirky there. Courtyards are not allowed unless the courtyard provides access. It could probably be made better. But I think we also have to cross-reference section 500, 503, C7 of the code because it will be a conflict if we don't. And that has to do.
When it says there, courtyard frontage in the 5th and 10th district is not permitted to take that on Hartford Avenue?
Yeah.
Should take that out or cross-reference that?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
I caught that in the middle of the last meeting and then it dropped out in my head later.
So in order to implement this for mixed-use buildings, there needs to be further correction in the section that defines court guards to avoid a conflict. So that needs to be clarified. So the aim of what we're saying should happen here. So maybe it's like that because otherwise there's a lot of conflict. Second issue. Okay, that's not worth mentioning. The other issue I wanna mention gets back to bicycle parking standards, which I believe is something that's in this amendment because of the relationship to SADO. I'm making sure the zoning and the SADO have things in the right place. So council was concerned about the bike parking standards that we had. I think what we had for long-term, and particularly regarding the residential, long-term bicycle parking. Although, that's what I remember most clearly. And I think what we had in the past was, was it one per unit plus one per bedroom or something like that? Or one per unit?
The greater of one per unit or one per bedroom.
Right. That's what we had in the past?
Yes.
I thought we had more because that's what they have here.
No, that was, well.
It used to be two per unit.
We talked about a variety of things.
It used to be two per unit, but the council bumped it down to one. One per unit or one per.
Oh, no, you're right. We had the greater of two per unit or one per bedroom.
And they changed it to one per unit.
You are.
So basically what that means is you have a studio or a one-bedroom apartment. You don't need to provide two bike places, you just provide one. They debated this greatly. So with it's like that. Well, people cared about it. We talked about it for a while too. They also added in language, and this is related to what council member Barak reported. It has to do with, I believe that they added it in here. It has to do with allowing bicycle parking to be in lockers.
The change is, so the SADO that was adopted says already, long-term bicycle parking spaces shall be located in designated, designated bicycle parking rooms or in bicycle storage locket, lockers designed for such purpose. And they're proposing to add, or in areas specifically designated for bicycle parking that fully protect parked bicycles from the weather. That's the addition, which is pretty broad. It seems like it would allow any kind of bicycle parking space that wouldn't get your bicycle ran down.
Okay, Chloe, is that in, in this amendment?
Yes, CC.
Oh, CC, okay.
CC number one. But it's hard to tell what's already in there and what's new. So it's like, this is the middle part that's new.
Right. And then two-tier bike racks that hold each wheel of bicycle and a second-tier firmly placed shall be permitted.
That's new.
Like one, two-tier bikes. So they added that. That's, that's something we recommended. And then I think council member Barak was interested in further changes. Is that right?
Yes, she mentioned wording change for the two-tier bike racks. I'm sure that it's a good style, which that seems fine to me, remember that wording. And she proposed adding a fourth thing to this long-term bicycle spaces to specifically, explicitly allow them in garages. But it seems like the other language they already put in there would already allow that because it just says in areas specifically designated for bicycle parking that fully protect parked bicycles from the weather. So like in a parking garage, if you put a bike rack in there, that seems like that would comply unless it's not clear enough.
That seems totally clear. What was that?
I don't know.
Is that Kevin?
Have you got any?
My body, my partner, gave my body friends work for about 10 minutes. They tried to email Chloe. It's coming through now, I'll hold myself right now. Just trying to see if I can look at it.
I got a message from someone else at the audio manager.
I just got a message, it's just back, so.
Okay, all right. You do have backup, of course. Okay, anyway, that is all new. And then council member Barak was interested in adding those things. I, I honestly don't know that it's, I don't know that we're able to do that tonight. I mean, did you look at those comments?
Yeah, well, I mean, the comments about the, so she wanted to add a two-tier lift-assisted bike rack to ensure that it wouldn't, you know, it's the kind that helps lift your bike up because it has to be high enough to put another bike underneath it. So she wanted to add that. That seems fine to me. The other thing seems a little duplicative based on the amendment that's already proposed to me, where it's the same. Or in a secure, non-public garage, which seems like a narrower version of the, if language is already being added here for both by council. But I don't think it's necessary if that other language is going in.
I guess what she's saying is, I mean, a non, a secure, non-public garage could be a bicycle parking room, right? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, it seems like a subset of this area specifically designated for bicycle parking that fully protects parked bicycles from the weather. Like anything, bicycle parking in a secure, non-public garage would already be permitted by that other language. That's what I'm saying.
All right. Is anyone concerned about, about that, about changing that to clarify the double height and where bicycle, bicycles can be parked? I, I, I can't say that I think this one through too well if, you know, council member Barak pays a lot of attention to these issues. And so I'm assuming she knows what she's suggesting.
Okay, I, I feel like the question might be about this general language. If there's any concerns about that.
I'm sorry, do you have any insight into the suggestions that council member Barak is making about bicycle parking?
No, no, they're good suggestions. I usually take her word for it, so.
Do you have concerns about this, this general allowance? Do you have concerns about this, this general allowance for long-term bicycle parking, whether, we had specifically said in a bicycle parking room or in a bike locker? And they're making that, it's much more general, which is probably okay, but no.
Probably more flexibility for
You can stick a regular bike rack anywhere where it won't get rained on, and it seems like that would comply with what they're thinking this year.
Yeah.
It does, yeah, probably makes it a lot easier to fly with.
Well, the building owner is required to provide a certain amount of bike parking.
Or it'll be once
Parking slash bike storage, and if real, the amount of real estate available in the building is insufficient for standard, simple, plain Jane bike rack, then it might be a solution to have a double-tiered bike rack.
Right, that makes sense.
That has nothing to do with the zoning.
It's in the SADO.
It, it's just a, it's just a way of solu, of solving the problem of how do I stick X number of bikes in Y amount of square foot.
That seems fine.
And honestly, why would we have to weigh in on that?
No, that's fine.
Okay, so then, is anyone, should anyone agree to make your law from that? Okay, so that brings up the MCPC's comments.
I have a couple extra hard copies. Do you guys want them?
Sure.
MCPC's comments come in the category of subdivision land development orders changes. Most of that has to do with design requirements that we've put into the SADO. The second is green building. The third is multi-family mixed-use development, and the fourth is bicycle parking. So, do you have any comments about bicycle parking that we just didn't, we didn't cover just a minute ago, Chloe?
Um, yeah, the other comment was actually just about the allowance for bike lockers and whether you might want to consider any thinking through replacement of bike lockers. They, they're like these boxes where you put your bike in, lock them in there. Would you allow them on a sidewalk, would you allow them in front of the building to stop, things like that, that you might want to think through, that I hadn't thought of before, that's a comment. I mean, I know the letter looks like it comes from me, but it comes from a lot of meetings that involve other people. So that was a comment that came up. I don't think that's urgent, and we think that has to be discussed tonight, but it might be something to consider.
Can we add that to our list of Anyone, I haven't made that tonight for bike lockers.
I'd like to have no bike lockers on sidewalk.
Okay.
Or in front of the building.
Yeah, and I feel like visuals would really help facilitate the discussion, like, what are we talking about, you know?
So let's talk about that in the future meeting, when we're talking about the next renovation. Let's talk about the multi-family mixed-use development first. So Chloe, there's three here, you want to?
Sure. So the one comment was for this requirement that 10% of dwelling units in apartment buildings on historic, properties with historic building in 5B and in three-story buildings in 5A had to be 550 square feet or smaller. MCPC supports trying to have more affordability where possible, but wondering if it's a very small building with, you know, four units, three units, whether you end up with weird architectural configurations that are kind of challenging, and whether you want to make it applicable to a minimum of like five or six units. To at least have at least five or six units, 10% of them rounding up have to be 550 square feet.
We discussed that, right?
Well, you and Michael and I discussed that.
Yeah.
And you had said maybe six.
Yeah, I mean, because that like syncs it up with right, like our, our code differentiates like multi-family house as a form of multi-family at up to five. Above that, you're different. Thing, right? So maybe that's the threshold in terms of if, if you want to set a kind of trigger, is the difference between five and six units? I still think for the most part, like, if you're participating in these programs and you're getting an additional story, probably going to have more than that number of units anyway, so I don't know like, whether this is actually going to matter in regards to things. But, if we need to set an arbitrary line, that was the least arbitrary of arbitrary lines.
Six or more units.
Six or more units. Yeah.
So anyone object to exempting buildings with five or fewer units from this requirement to have one? Okay, because it, it rounds down, I think, so that's how you would get that, right?
Uh, they wrote it into round up.
It rounds up.
Round up, so then why would it even be an issue?
Well, if you came in with a project that had, say, four units, then you would not come, then this specific provision would not apply to it.
Right, so you would round up to one?
You'd still have to have one.
Okay, sorry, so it starts at six, okay, I don't see anyone objecting to that, historic buildings is residential.
Oh, that's just the, the little gym building. It's, the whole provision allowing that is written in this really long footnote that also addresses something about the code, the code on Windsor Avenue and the allowance for four-story buildings there. It's just kind of, there's no objection to the provision, it's just kind of weirdly written in a very long footnote that addresses multiple things in one footnote. So that was, really, it's really a comment about structure of the code, I'm not sure it needs to be discussed here. And then the only one, other one was about upper stories setbacks, setback, stepbacks, which for 5A is written, 16% of the building width of the third story must be stepped back 10 feet. In 5B, it's written, any portion of the building above 35 feet must be, the language actually says set back, in 5B one foot for every two feet of total building height above 35 feet. Just raising the question of whether, like, those are worded really differently with different kind of requirements for essentially the same thing. Whether you wanted to have some kind of consistency there, similar wording. And then we'd suggest using the term step back rather than set back for that in both places, instead of calling one a step back and one a step back.
Okay, since we gave deep consideration of 5A, and that the question is, should 5B consistent with what we proposed in 5A? Right, so 5B essentially is, you know, 714 Montgomery, properties like that. Big properties where you can put an apartment building. Would you, you know, the setbacks have different reasons, some we rate setbacks do, but do you feel like the setbacks in 5B much more consistent either in their scale or in the applicability to the length of the design?
Do you have a quick part, why, I guess, I don't remember why we went with 10 rather than five?
Because it felt like it would allow for a, a more functional, uh, space. And also
So what's the normal size of like a
It also allows for more like, just even minimal, like, to
Depends on whether you're in Brooklyn or in Narberth.
What's the average size in Narberth?
People use fire escapes in New York.
Yeah.
They're, you know, 30 years wide, you can get a chaise lounge out there.
There's some fire escapes in Narberth, I wouldn't say yes, walk around them.
That one, that one of the ones on the, those townhouses they built on Christ, many of them built those, there's three townhouses on Christ, and we always complained about how deep those those like balconies were, how wide are those?
I don't remember.
They just seem, every time I walk by those, they seem thin. They seem, not like, real. You notice someone's got a little table out there, but I think that was part of the issue, it's like wanting the space to be functional, lived in.
And occupied.
Occupied.
Nothing is taller than something that looks like a balcony that's too narrow to be used and ever, and therefore never is.
Yeah, but I guess like, what is the normal width of a functional balcony?
The gym's at its best.
Depends, yeah. It has to be furnishable, you have to, when you have a couple of chairs out there.
10 feet is wide, but I thought part of this was because of the the looming factor of a three-story building.
Yeah, it was, I think, part of it, that mentioned getting light.
Yeah.
But 5B, which is what we, we're really being asked about, it's a different situation, right? It's not really light, because the building is on the north side of the street. It's more about the relationship with the building to residential district and to the price house. And to surround, you know, more about its vasting context to the other development, it's a different situation. So, that's why, I, Chloe raised me, I was like, no, they don't have to be consistent, because they're different situations, but ask you guys if you feel like that would be the case. Last year, I mean, I mean, well, recognition.
It wasn't the M built?
I guess.
With a one and two ratio?
Yeah, that's, that's why we applied it to 714, because that's what they used to do. That's what we knew, it seemed okay.
Tim, you, did you want to? Just, just comment, because of everything that was on the, the agenda tonight, this was one that I wanted to comment on, really the only one. So, we talked last meeting about unintended consequences, and laying a framework that enboxes you going forward in terms of the aesthetic, the design of the building, and I, for what it's worth, I just want you to know that typically we do about six-foot balconies, that's what we typically do, I, I vetted this with Nancy and a few other architects. 10-foot is extraordinarily deep, it's more considered a terrace than a balcony. And the reason I want to bring it up here is because, again, unintended consequences. Nancy is a great designer, and she's with a great firm, and they have an amazing vision of what this building looks, will look like, that involves setbacks that are actually 12 feet on the corner. So full, real terraces, but then six-foot balconies on a portion. And then she felt pretty passionate that other areas should run the full height of three stories. So my point being, they laid out a great design, I rely on them and trust in them, that they're professionals, and they understand Narberth, and, and they could deliver a beautiful building. This language would, in her words, we can comply with it, but in her words, it would be, it would be an unusual look, and not something that she would necessarily ever envision or, or draw up. Hers involves both deeper setbacks, but then six-foot setbacks. So in the end, the yield is approximately the same, and certainly I think the objective you would accomplish, which is a good-looking building, that doesn't, it doesn't look monolithic in any way. And I will just further note that we did do a shade study. So we got into the weeds. And essentially what the shade study was based on was just a full-height three-story building block. And with the exception of, I think, the three darkest months of the year, where the sun, the southern side is in the direction, you know, behind us. The sun is so low that really honestly, a two-story building shades out a bit of it. But the other, call it nine months of the year, even with the three-story block of a building, you picked up sunlight you know, across the street, you're certainly not going to pick up the sunlight in front of the building, even if it's one-story, with the building blocks. So you're more concerned about across the street than you are in front of the building. So I just would note that we're in good shape, because if you ever take time to notice the way the building's laid out in the context of the southern exposure, fortunate, that you, you capture a lot of sunlight in the lion's share of the year. But anyway, just wanted to bring that up.
So I have a, I have a question for you guys in the commission, but let's go back to 5B, and then we'll return to the point that you're raising. And I thank you for putting that on the table. In terms of 5B, Heidi's right, we, at least the connection Heidi suggested is correct, that the, we suggested what we did for the 5B district, because we had that at the element, it seemed to work okay. And so my question first is, based on Chloe's flagging it, is there a reason to revisit that to make it more like what we proposed in 5A, or is, does it make sense to leave it if we made it? That's the only question.
I actually prefer the wording of 5B setback, but I'm okay with the 60% that's proposed for 5A. So for 5B, it could just be the one to two, and for 5A, we could include the additional language for 60%?
Anyone see a reason to change 5B? Okay, so in terms of 5A, here's, here's my thought given what Mr. Raven has just told us. I think this is, you know, this gets back to the challenge of writing a code that prevents bad things without preventing good things. So my given way to understand, I'm wondering how the commission would feel, how you guys would feel, if we moved, somehow moved that provision to the part of the code that we moved to the SADO, so there's more flexibility. So that the rule in SADO is 60% of the third story must be stepped back 10 feet, but if they come in with a satisfactory alternative, if it's in the SADO, it could be waived, as opposed to the zoning where it becomes a problem. I mean, we could engineer this all night just to come up with what he's saying, but that doesn't make sense. And we work in a place where we don't really have the flexibility that other communities have to have you know, guidelines and sort of reviews, so I'm, I'm wondering if that will be a solution to move that, to keep it the way it is, but move it to the SADO, so that if there's an alternative suggestion that we feel is equally satisfactory. And, but provides more select flexibility in the solutions. That, because, because, what you're telling us is that what we've proposed will not allow for your team to explore an idea that you've got, that you think has value. And seems on the face of it to meet the intent of what we're interested in, right? We just put one, three stories on the way down, but I'm So, how do y'all feel about that, keeping the way it is and moving it? Asking the solicitor to figure out how to move it into the SADO, and maybe as part of the 65-foot wide building.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
I'm inclined to agree that 10 feet is excessive setback.
Yeah.
Totally excessive, and it wouldn't be useful. It would in fact rob square footage for the units themselves.
It would kill the design.
And it would kill the design.
If we put it in the SADO, we can, if we see a better idea, we can waive it.
I'd suggest that we would, that we accept Tim's suggestion, and use a number of 60 and move it to the SADO.
The, the one to two would, if hypothetically you had a 45-foot tall building, would give you a five-foot setback.
It's limited to three stories, so you're probably not going to get a building that to fall that way, so you'd have to probably do the one to two above a smaller number.
It would have to be above a smaller number.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're limited to 36 feet in this anyway, so it would, yeah. I think, I think what Jim suggested makes sense, and I saw a lot of nodding heads.
So what, can you restate that?
No, this never happens.
And they were nodding, okay, I'm under left, right? Chloe, can you restate that? Jim, either can you or Michael, can you restate what Jim just said? So we'll move to the SADO, so that if there's a better solution.
And so switch out, switch out 10 feet for 60. A minimum of six, you could say.
Well, if we made it a minimum of six, okay, then that almost allows exactly everything Tim was describing. Because you can always have 12, 20, 60, but if you do the SADO, it allows that.
Yeah, if you wanted a terrace, then that would be a whole different thing.
Okay, how's that sound? We changed the sticks and moved to SADO. That's great, okay. So you, I'm sure you heard me say before that one way or another, this will take a further, you know, cycle of code writing. Okay. All right, so that takes care of the mixed-use comments, let's talk about SADO. So Chloe, you've made a couple of comments about the design requirements for the, for the SADO. I think with your, some of the questions, I mean, so, let, let's see if we can sort of deal with the easy ones and then move on to the difficult ones. So, one of the things you flagged under B in your letter is terminology for vertical use in SADO is a very similar way, and for horizontal is in the zoning code. For example, the zoning code says the horizontal mass of any facade shall be interrupted while proposed, SADO language says the vertical sections shall be differentiated. And so you're asking that be reverted for clarity, so I, I think, I think, I think that's probably, I think you're right about that, so that's something we can do, so essentially Chloe's saying is we use horizontal and vertical, we mean the same thing in different parts of the code, so she wants to clarify that.
Our job here is done then?
Right, right. So that's what that is, I think that's a acceptable. The, the second is traditional downtown character. And this is, I think it came up in one of your comments too, Jennifer. The notion that traditional historic downtown is frequently of consistency as opposed to the kind of variation we're proposing in this section of the SADO. And that the requirements variation might result in appearance that doesn't mimic downtown character as extended as intended. So this is actually like gets at the philosophical heart of that whole section. So really your question is if one were to say like those requirements lead us in the wrong direction, then we would, the answer is we simply wouldn't have them, right? So I guess since you raised that too, Jennifer, it's worth an airing as to whether we need requirements that that require variation at a certain scale. Now, we have zoning requirements in our zoning that require smaller buildings, variations every twenty feet. Certain vertical elements go this way. Horizontal is this twenty feet, vertical differentiation. And what we put in this code proposal is that if we're anticipating larger buildings, we also have to think about variation at a larger scale, approximately every forty to forty five feet. That's the basic idea in that. And so to present the, so that the buildings present themselves either in their massing or their architecture or their detailing as looking as different segments. Now, you all didn't have the benefit of this, but one of the things when we were working on this, we had the benefit of Adam Krab showing us pictures of how this works in real life in downtown Norbert. And sometimes it's simply a matter of this like putting applied ornament. The little masonry ornaments that are almost like tacked upon. This is the way the YCA building works, right? And the corner it wraps around and where real pizza bits, if you actually look at it, it's a rather consistent facade, but it does have that scaling, which is which is accomplished largely through decorative ornament. That's the only word for it. And that's what's provided. I mean, that is one of the things that could be provided for. So I guess the question is, is one, you know, just to affirm that that kind of every forty foot scaling is important so that we don't have, we have differentiation every forty feet or so in one way, shape or form. Or if that's indicative to the code of character, downtown downtown, have that variation.
I was fine with the variation. My concern was that I felt that the way that it was being described was being too specific. And so it was coming across as like if you're not doing masonry, you need a vertical trim board, which just felt like too harsh of a break between materialities. Like if you're already switching materials, don't you have a natural vertical line every forty feet anyway?
Well, could that be addressed by simply, right now, it's like this is six things that says and. Could you simply say a combination of these things and one to three for five or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, it just felt, it felt like we were telling everyone they had to have something that was like very specifically defined as opposed to allow for that kind of creative interpretation of what a vertical separation means.
Or differentiation and difference.
Yeah, and that's why also my other problem had been a call out for the masonry. Because having consistent masonry may actually make a building feel like it's part of this or context. Because large buildings were filled with the same texture and color, but they were broken up by these vertical elements and changes in material for the time of the building. So by saying that you can't, you can't repeat your masonry color after so many feet, it felt like we're restricting, we're actually going to make it feel like we're trying too hard to break up the length of the street.
So but if it said or, would that fix that? So to respond to Jen's earlier question, can you please tell us what you're referring to? What we're referring to is, let's see.
Where is that? Very AA.
Letter AA?
Yes.
Letter AA where we're trying to suggest in the SADO ways of scaling large buildings that are over sixty five feet so that they have a, they feel like they fit better into the green community. And so it lists five different things that are requested and they're connected by and. So in essence, to follow the letter of this, you have to do five different things. But if you change it to or, that just means you can pick a combination.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like some of them didn't need that, like having doors in every vertical section just made sense to me, but the vertical elements and the changes in material felt like we were limiting ourselves or potentially setting ourselves up for failure in what our intentions are.
Is any, is everybody agreeable to changing that to or so that it's like a menu of items that, and then therefore they can be applied a little more flexibly?
Yeah, I felt too was a sort of an imposition that would. I think there is a balance between historic sensibilities and modernism. I don't have a problem with modernism. I think you can approach, I mean, you know, Nise Vander Rohe did it. You can approach classical ideas through modernist idea, you know, expressions.
This doesn't really talk about.
But.
Preferred expression just talks about variation from section to section of the building, so.
I felt though that it was imposing regulations that out of forty foot interval were shaking it up more than it needed to be. I'm just, I'm just agreeing.
Wow, it's a relief there, you see.
I think adding or in that list of A for E.
How about, the English language gives us and/or.
Or.
As a way out of this conundrum.
There you go. And the door thing is actually listed separately, so that would still require even if you change this to or, or to and.
You know, it so much depends on context. I went to Westchester this weekend. I was photographing the buildings and trying to understand the scale. And they have some bigger, they have taller buildings, but that's because the street is wider. And they have longer buildings, but that's because the blocks are longer and there are three of them. And so you can accommodate those longer buildings. You have more context all around. So it's really, it's really hard to say. Our situation is much smaller. Where a hundred and thirty foot building that has the same pattern feels great in Westchester. It'll feel different in our context because our, that would be like, you know, that's a hundred and thirty feet out of a thousand feet.
Right, yeah, it was more just the limiting because it may actually make the a longer building feel more in context if eighty feet of it had the same masonry color and texture and then had a complete break for the next segment.
We can change it to and/or and that just loosens it up a little.
Yeah.
All right, let's see, and then.
Well, yeah, I just like from a, from a code writing perspective, I don't know that and/or makes sense because it's a shall. I guess, I think, I think the or assumes the and.
Let the solicitor sort of.
Yeah, let the solicitor, let the solicitor sort of follow.
One or would follow. Well.
Yeah. I don't want to make a federal case.
Technical, we'll figure it out.
And then Chloe, I almost think that deals with your next one, the reset.
Yeah, I think that's, so we can keep that. I also realized that the red lines thing should be in the other column. That was my mistake.
Okay.
Because that's an existing dummy.
The last one then is, I'm sorry, do you want?
That's all right, keep going.
Okay, so the last topic in your letter, I think, is green building, right?
Yes.
Every other topics, okay. These are the thorny area ones.
Yeah, thorny area.
And then that's all the comments we've got and then we can decide how we want to proceed with this. Accessory dwelling units. The proposed requirements include installing renewable energy for both principal dwelling and the ADU. Because ADUs are small units, the cost of implementing some of these will, that will be required may discourage the development of ADUs. So let's pause there. So what we're requiring is if possible, the ADU would incorporate sustainable or renewable energy generated on site, right? That language you know is a little murky, it's like to the extent possible, but that's number one. If you can't do it on site, then you have to buy energy from a renewable energy source, which we can all do through PA power switch and which if the borough creates its community choice program, can be baked into any utility connection anyway, right? I guess what I'd say, I mean Chloe, I'm not just, I'm just not sure that's really discouragement to create an ADU to have to buy power from.
No, no, that wasn't the, that wasn't the point. It says electricity, heating, cooling and similar systems shall be provided from onsite renewable sources for both the ADU and the principal dwelling if such systems are viable.
I think that's a mistake because I think we didn't intend that to apply to the existing unit. If you read our notes.
So that's how it's written in the proposed code, that both the principal dwelling unit and the ADU have to basically install renewable energy, which is great. I'm a big fan.
Wait, I don't think we actually suggested that.
Okay, well then maybe we want to, I don't know, got out of by council or where that is a particular. That is what's written in the code.
So what we recommended, I'm going back to our letter, for ADUs, energy efficiency must meet current IECC standard. But I mean, that's not even, did you write that in the code?
That's no, that's not in the code for ADUs. It's in the other part, but not for ADUs.
Well, it needs to be there for ADUs too. That's what we recommend. It must meet the current IECC standard. And then carbon reduction in operation, no hookups for fossil fuels, including and not limited to natural gas and oil, accepting backup emergency power generation.
Something like that.
And then. Okay, so it is what we wrote. It doesn't exactly, is that what I remember. In addition, the requirement that must be met for both the ADU and the principal dwelling and lot, provide electricity, heating, cooling from onsite renewable sources to the extent possible. So that's what you're saying could be discouraging or acquire electricity. I'm just letting you read this and then whoever wanted to comment. And then or acquire electricity from PA state one hundred percent providers and must participate in community choice activation program if, when it shows a dynamic ground, so.
I thought that was specific to new development of like a new construction lot with an ADU being constructed at the same time as opposed to an existing property that has been added.
Well, it was, it's not said there, so let's, let's tackle this. Let's ask ourselves first, did we really intend for a principal building? If an existing homeowner with a house wants to add an ADU like somewhere else on their lot, did we intend to require the existing house to retrofit itself to receive with onsite renewable, energy generated from onsite renewable resources? I don't think we intended that.
I don't think so either. That would be pretty humorous.
Did we intend for the principal building to purchase its electricity from renewable providers? I think we were really just trying to apply this to the ADU.
Yeah, unless they're subdividing a lot, you probably have to do both from, but I don't think that's a good deal requiring electricity purchased from a renewable energy.
Well, I'm just trying to remember what we were.
Yeah, if the power is provided as a sub panel to your main panel and you're requiring that you purchase your electricity from a renewable resource, you will automatically be purchasing it to your home also.
Right.
But that's again, just a setting.
It's not what we, we didn't intend to require.
Right.
So then the only other question is if someone is building an ADU and a new principal building at the same time, do we require them of both? We never talked about that.
I thought we debated it in the meeting when we, this was a few minutes ago.
Does anyone else recall that?
I don't recall the discussion that involved a brand new principal building.
Well, since Jennifer raised it.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Do we want to clarify that? So first we'll clarify that if it's an existing structure and someone wants to build an ADU as an accessory building, the rules do not apply to an existing structure, which is a new. However, if they're building a new structure and an ADU at the same time as part of a new subdivision or a new development, would we apply when to both? I would say why not?
Is there like a significant difference in like, if I'm going to be doing that, here's a significant difference in costs when you're constructing all of this at the same time?
I think the reason we didn't actually is because the solicitor's interpretation of this is that the.
It's a tendency to expect the way.
More or less that the, whatever we're allowing, like a single family house or multi-family house or twin or a lot is sort of a, an asset right thing. And you can't add requirements to that that go beyond whatever the state law allows you to do. But then an ADU is like a bonus, then you can add requirements. So I think that's probably why we landed there. So even if you're building a new house, it may not.
I found the meeting minutes.
Well, you can have a gas hookup. So what are you going to do?
The minutes from February, we discussed new construction not having hookups for fossil fuels. And that was, it was a blanket, like.
New construction of both, that new house, I know.
Okay.
Well, that's logical.
Okay, what's that?
It's logical because you're not going to be allowed a gas hookup.
Right.
For that new house. If you're building the house and the, and the accessory unit at the same time, then it's all new. You're not going to be allowed a gas hookup for the house.
Why would we allow gas hookup for the house and not the ADU? Let's see if we can, that was in the minutes, then let's refresh. The notes I gave to the solicitor were wrong. They weren't consistent in the minutes. So well, I would completely consider that. I think.
Not more or less addressed the ADU concern about. It seems like a lot to require both the principal dwelling and the ADU to install renewable energy, but.
Well, if they're new.
No, no, not if, if they're new, that's fine. That was, it was just the way it had been.
Okay, so yeah, I think we clarified that.
We can probably design.
Clarification, you just would like the clarification of reasonably viable, which is a solicitor language and then about, about you, you would be required to have onsite renewable generation if it's reasonably viable, but that's not really a standard that.
Yeah, well, I mean, one, it's written in another place. It's written for ADUs and then in a general place. In one case it says viable, in one case it says reasonably viable. So even though it's not measurable, there's maybe consistency between the two.
Let me say one, let's make it consistent. And two, let's ask the solicitor to talk to Kevin and find out a standard that can be applied in reviewing this.
Yeah, should have any better language. I don't have a suggestion, but if there's anything more forceful, maybe Kevin has some ideas.
Okay. Renewable and electricity purchases. We language that as purchase energy from a one hundred percent renewable energy provider, which I know you can do because I do it on my PA power switch. But you're saying a little language, that's not different. Offset electricity purchases and renewable energy credits, that is the same but different.
It's the same thing. That's how, I mean, that's essentially how the, and some of you know a lot more about this than I do, but how, you know, you buy a hundred percent wind energy, it's not like you're directly buying energy. Your electricity electrons flowing to your house come from the wind farm. It's just that that money puts more wind energy in the whole grid. So just the way it's written sort of implies a hundred percent renewable energy provider. It's, they're like. It's, they're like, they're renewable energy suppliers that supply the grid with more renewable. Anyway, just to, just to make sure it's, the language doesn't get you kind of tangled up with with anything. That was a suggestion from our sustainability guide. To reword that.
Jen, do you have any good say?
I was just going to say, like, you could say from a third-party 100% renewable energy supplier, and that would make it clear that you don't have a direct relationship with the provider.
Right, I think something like that could also work.
Okay.
Just for clarity.
Yeah, I don't want someone like to buy energy for Pico and then click the box that says, yeah, I'll buy credits for, like you do when you're like flying in a plane somewhere and like you can pay American Airlines. What do they do with that money? Okay, if that's acceptable, Jen, that's what we'll do. It's generous. And in terms of community choice aggregation, Chloe, what you'd say there is if the solicitor feels the borough can manage that in there tonight, I think that will be different.
I've mentioned this before. They want me to put it in the letter that it's still highly unusual to require something hypothetical that might or might not exist in the future in your zoning code. But if you want that in there and the solicitor says it's fine, then that's fine. We're just putting it on the record. That's our opinion on that.
Okay, so what, what will happen next is, hopefully with Michael's help, we'll write up a summary of the changes that we feel, whether they're specific or just general, ought to be incorporated into this zoning revision. So the, the choice that I put out at the beginning was, and there may be other choices now that you've thought of, but the one that I put out was one, to vote to recommend counsel to approve the amendment as presented. Two, the second would be to vote to recommend to counsel to approve this ordinance as presented, but to modify it in a subsequent ordinance, which is for solicitor's preference. Third would be not to recommend this ordinance, but to recommend a new one that has all these corrections in it, which could potentially be advertised at the end of the month. And the third, the last choice would be not to rec, I'll call you in a second. Did you want to comment?
I just, I didn't intend to, but I just wanted to point one thing out again.
Just a second now.
Whatever you want me to.
The, the fourth choice would be not to recommend this ordinance because you disagree with it for any reason whatsoever. The other choice is now. I realize at the end of a discussion like this, we do ask the audience, the public who's here in attendance or online, if they have any questions or comments about any of the topics we've talked about before we consider a recommendation. So it would be appropriate if you'd like to make a comment or ask a question.
Just comment on the gas as it relates to the commercial portion of the project. And I just wanted to point out that by precluding gas in the commercial, you know, the retail portion, I can't say with absolute authority that this is 100%, but I'm fairly certain that it would, it would preclude us from doing any restaurant food uses. And potentially, a use like gas might not be able to operate. Again, I need to do a little homework. There might be workarounds. Generally, I have not dealt with any food use that hasn't required gas, including the one that's moving into Forest and the tenant that's moving into 203. It was a condition of the deal that a gas hookup. I don't know whether that was the intention. You could solve it a bunch of different ways. I just wanted to point it out.
Let's talk about that for a second. But first, let's see if anyone else in the public, either in the room or online, has a comment to make. Anyone else here tonight have a comment about any of these topics? Or question? Okay, I see one person in the public meeting who's not in the meeting. That's Ira. Ira, do you have any comments or questions? Okay, so let's take a minute to consider Tim's point. Jen, and I'm going to look to you because you've led our thinking about this.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And I can't really comment in any like with technical specificity about what the, you know, whether that criteria could be met or not. I, I just don't know. If the question is, are we sympathetic enough with the situation? Like, would we, what would we value? How would we weigh that? Having a functional restaurant with the capacity to serve a number of people over a, you know, gas-fired grill? I don't know. Or, or maintain like a very hard-line, no-gas hookup regulation? I mean, I think that's what we're thinking about.
That's right. I'm kind of curious, in your knowledge of this sphere and how this stuff.
Not, I don't know. I defer to others.
In all the commercial kitchens I've done designs for, there are not mainstream commercial kitchen equipment for ovens, stoves, salamanders, et cetera, that come as an all-electric option. So I do think that by prohibiting that hookup for commercial that we are going to then be limiting what tenants we are going to have on the avenue, which is, we are trying to increase the traffic and the types of occupants that we have on the ground floor of those spaces. So I think it's something we need to consider.
I agree.
Yeah, and just picking up on that point, I think it makes policy sense to me to say, to, to just apply that just to residential because theoretically, what we're trying to do is create walkable commercial uses generally. I wouldn't want to just carve out restaurant on its own because I don't know what other ones may have similar issues. But in terms of like, if we're thinking about this as a green energy environmental provision, then inherently ensuring that we're allowed to have walkable uses that you don't have to take your car to is in and of itself a environmental green policy. So I would say it makes sense to me that we just want to apply that to the residential components.
So my interpretation is we could go for net zero under that condition. We can say, as long as you're subtracting, if you're contributing, as long as we reach a net zero. Is acceptable in terms of?
Well, I'd like to pursue that, but first, I will see if anyone else has a comment about this. Should we?
Just based on what I said.
I know, but like, I'm curious of Claire or Heidi.
Well, I guess I would just comment that if there's a, if it's a matter of cooking with gas, that's a separate issue and that's probably a more minimal use than having the whole building be gas-fired, heating and cooling systems and things like that. I really think that's probably the bigger use anyway is, is that, I mean, certainly allowing a small gas line for cooking is a good compromise.
It's on who your, who your chef is.
Well, the facilities aren't that big, though. I mean, we're not talking about rental, leaseable spaces that large.
But you're, what you're really suggesting is differentiating the purpose.
Right, right.
Chloe, do you have any insight on this for your?
No, I'm really glad that you raised this issue. I think it's an interesting one. And the 15 seconds on the internet says that restaurants are not going to come to eat to a space that concur with what it looks like. But I, no, I don't have any particular knowledge or expertise in this stuff.
I mean, on the other hand, it is possible that down the road, electricity may be more viable option. So preclude that, yeah.
Right.
Is it, it all feasible to have electric service, as you're saying, Friday?
Available for future.
For the heating and cooling purposes, but to have gas service available for particular uses like cooking or, I don't know, maybe something like that? Is that a feasible thing?
Sure.
Okay, so let's recommend, it sounds to me like the sentencing limit is to recommend. We have to some sort of carve out for cooking purposes or purposes like that.
For commercial.
To allow for a line to be installed for that purpose.
For commercial specifically.
Yeah, yeah, for commercial.
Could it be like a use, like call, like you call out like cooking uses, but then perhaps the ability for other uses to maybe petition for the allowable for gas?
Yeah, because like, what are we, we didn't catch the cooking one. What else are we not catching?
I'm wondering how Googling refrigeration just eliminates like my, our market.
What's the village smithy going to do?
Excellent.
Anthracite. Wonder if there are any other uses that require gas?
Well, that's what Tim was saying, quickly Googling, right? Get on the surface. By the way, we want to add a new requirement. We're wondering if you're open. Any new developments sort of has to add cellphone towers. All four. Or a heater or something like that. Okay, well, it sounds like we are sympathetic to the notion that there might be very specific commercial uses where a gas hookup for that particular activity is important as opposed to the overall equal HVAC system in the zone. And, and other routine power uses. And that for those purposes, we would allow an exception to this rule.
Yeah.
And we could say, so jazz cooking, and then that kind of leaves it open for?
Those are isolated cases. And I would say like, you know, HVAC is a system. It connects to a larger grid, whereas those isolated cases should be called out.
Right, so for now, we can list cooking. I mean, refrigeration seems to be one. Those refrigerators, don't they just run on electricity?
Just I'm not enough about all that. I, I can get a quick answer once I get rid of this.
All right, well, I think you got a sympathetic here to that. So we can at least mention restaurants right now. Okay, so.
Maybe the thing two is what I think Jen was just saying, say HVAC systems in commercial uses have to use, cannot be natural gas, but the other.
In fact, the general, general power sources, but specialized cooking.
Specialized activities related to the use in the space could then use the natural gas heated.
Right.
HVAC is specifically limited. Like, that's the largest use of gas.
Yeah. Okay. All right, then, so I pose four different ways we could approach this. And I guess it'd be good just to have like a straw poll, how people feel before we kind of decide how we want to bring a recommendation. How many people are inclined to say, let's recommend the council that they just approve it as is and we're done? Okay, all right, well, that's important. So no one would support that. Okay, how many people would be inclined to say, you know what? Let's, it's okay for council to approve this, to vote to approve this code as long as it is followed by a fix-up code that addresses all these things we've talked about and any other things that might come up throughout the conversation. Who would be inclined to support that particular recommendation?
Can I ask a procedural thing? Because I'm, I'm fine with that. I just, what's the procedural difference between, is it just approve this now, then amend, like pass another ordinance to change it versus not recommend, but re-notice? Like, is there, I guess I like, is there a difference in terms of like, is the main difference just like timeline? Or what's the functional difference between these two?
Between the first and the second?
Between second and third?
Second and third? I think the functional differentiation is timeline and actually assurance that will really happen.
Well, could we, can we make a request that we identify those subjects which are continuing, that need clarification?
Yes, so like, what I think what would happen is, between now and the council meeting, Michael and I would compare our notes about that and send them a memo. It says here are the things we've identified. And I think some things we have actual suggestions for and other things we sort of, you know, they need to be fixed and we're not quite sure how. Or maybe the hardware's broken or something like that. But yes, we have to have that documented. So that's the difference. Michael, I think one is timing. And the other is, because quite honestly, you know, the ground council may decide not to have something supporting this because something else comes up, you know?
What's the, what, so I understand. What's the difference in timing between two and three?
Well, okay, so correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think council intends to vote on this ordinance at the next meeting. Correct?
One that was advertised.
Right, so the one that was advertised, the one that you have that we've been commenting on, their intention and the solicitor's intention is to recommend they vote on this at their next meeting, which comes up the third Thursday.
Gotcha.
So two weeks. Conceivably, they could actually introduce the next ordinance at that meeting. We, the solicitor, could get together and agree on that language.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they can't introduce it since they don't have a business meeting. They don't have two meetings, only one in August. They can introduce it in August.
Okay.
The fix-up ordinance.
That makes sense, yes, so.
So they can introduce a fix-up ordinance either July or August.
Okay, so, so, so it's a matter of logistics. So option two, which is the one we're kind of like specifying for right now, allows them to solve for the fact that they don't have, that they're limited in the number of meetings that they have.
Right, on the other hand, if we were to, if we were to recommend they just fix it up before they went on it, it would be the same timetable. See, I know there's a chance they could fix it up and re-advertise it in July or in August. So the question I have, do you mind if I ask you a question? Tim and Bob? So if council were to vote on this ordinance, let's just have a scenario, okay? So if council were to vote on this ordinance Thursday, or next Thursday, or whatever the third Thursday is, so that is now part of the code. But were to introduce a fix-up ordinance at the same meeting in which you, I guess you could vote on it. I think John told me they couldn't vote until September. That's really the calendar works, right? So September would be the full fledge code, right? So what, what happens to you? Do you intend to submit your application, an application before September, the council meeting? Or would you have to wait until they approve the fix-up code anyway?
In terms of submission, I think that's his call, but it would allow us to start engineering the plan. So I think it would allow us to get a plan faster if council were to, we can hear you. I think it would allow us to start the process because it's going to take weeks to engineer the plan to get ready for submission. So if the council approves what this is, I think this has substantively what we asked for. We could start engineering a plan subject to some of these cleanups that we know are coming and then we can kind of hold up the push or pull and then make the submission.
So it gives you a couple of months to start.
Exactly, which has to plan to be faster. Otherwise, we're waiting until this, the forwardness gets adopted. It doesn't adopt in July.
So that's, that's a substantive difference, too.
Gotcha. Which makes sense if we're heading in the same direction and all these things are part of this, it makes sense to me, too. Allow them to start it up so we can actually get something in front of us in our shorts.
Well, that's the important part, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so the third, third choice would be 75 people. I didn't vote yet, but I think five people would support the idea of recommending to council that they, that council approved the ordinance from us, but quickly create a fix-up ordinance. Anyone, is anyone inclined to ask for the council to fix the ordinance before they actually vote on it? I would make, I was in that camp until I heard what you guys just said. Okay, and then is anyone in the camp where, you know, you just, the things about this code you don't agree with and you just wouldn't want to vote? Wouldn't want council to vote? You want to vote to not recommend to council because you simply disagree with something? Anyone in that camp?
I was, but.
Okay, so it sounds like we are coalescing around the idea of recommending the council. Both Heidi and I are moving to the point, uh, to the point where we would recommend the council, the council would vote to approve the code that was presented to us. But asking them to address numerous issues that we've discussed tonight, that Chloe's team has raised, that some of us have raised, and we could provide a memo that outlines that to them. Which we can share formally with you before we send it to council if you watch your email in August. Or July, maybe finish this in July. So that would be the, I think that's the straw poll, so I think that would be the motion that would be on the table. So I'll put that motion on the table. Is there a second to that motion, Jim? Is there any further discussion for that motion? Okay, all in favor of that motion, then? Any opposed? Okay, so we will recommend the council that they vote to approve this, but we will submit to the list of corrections that we may need to be made in the fix-up ordinance before the this can be truly functional codes. And Michael and I will collaborate on that and send you a draft. Thank you. It's a lot of work. It's been two hours, which is pretty good for us. I'd like to move on to the topic of dispersion of uses. Not a assignment we chose, but our role to advise council to ask us questions is our duty to provide advice. So I actually think we've covered this, except that in the notes, my notes from our two meetings, they can fly, so I think we, there's a few things we can just resolve, then I can write the letter to council. Hopefully, so I I flagged four things from my notes and other notes that I think need clarification. Quite honestly, in the, in the kind of written narratives of our minutes, in the first time we talked about this in April, we re-reported a consensus in supporting this general idea of separating different uses in the 5A and 5B district. However, in the minutes, recently approved, by the way, minutes from a meeting, there were some commissioners who said they actually didn't like this. Didn't think it was necessary, that's in our minutes. So I guess I first want to test the general consensus. Are there, is there, are there plenty of commissioners who feel like this is really not an idea? No, assuming we can cook it and make it to satisfaction, or are there folks who feel it's just not a necessary idea? Or, or is there, and if you want to find out who are read the minutes. I'm not going to call you. Do you think it's a workable enough idea despite whatever reservations you might have expressed, Jim?
To the best of my recollection, and I will just recap. I believe there was some dissent, but that in the end, the case was made that in order to really have in a thriving balanced economy, that we have to have separation of uses that would allow for two of the same within the same commercial corridor.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with that? Okay, all right, I just, you know, reading things, I want to make sure I'm not making something up that's not represented. So, okay, so secondly, that second question I had is leaves more to remember, Jennifer, you were raising this question. Existing businesses are grandfathered in, and I'd like to confirm that the separation of uses would apply to separation from not only new businesses separating from each other, but also separated from existing businesses, no matter where they happen to be, even if they are in opportunity, but you still have to separate from existing businesses. It's not just applying to new things and coming through. Is that everyone's understanding?
Yes.
There was some discussion of whether, like, within the 5A, if it were within that same distance from the same use, but that use was in another district, that was applying, that would apply, and I think that was fairly hypothetical one that they, that.
That's the next question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, why did you ask that? Does this separation of uses prefer, pertains, so A, this is like, who wants to be a millionaire? A, only to Haveford Avenue and North 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 Avenue. B, to all of 5A. Or C, does it also include the surrounding 4A district? Some of these uses are actually allowed by conditional use. So for, I think, for example, hair service places are allowed by conditional use in 4A district. Which is another matter that we need to address, I think, but for now, that's what it is, and so does this apply only to Haveford and North North Avenue, to all of 5A, or 5A and is it taken into account 4A?
It made the most sense to me.
I like to call a friend.
It made the most sense to me the reason I was, for it to just to be the Haveford and North North Avenue, because the logic that was presented was that it was about wanting, like, active pedestrian spaces and those are your kind of pedestrian.
Corridors, right. There's, in our minutes, our discussion, uh, this should also apply to the rest of 5A because who would want to run barber shops on Forest Avenue? I think was, was the discussion, so. I think the same, so probably we could all agree it would apply to Haveford and North Avenue, so do people feel it should extend to all of 5A district or just to Haveford and North Avenue? Is it okay if two barber shops are located on Forest Avenue, or will we be seeing the end of our commercial viability?
I was seeing all of 5A, but I was also thinking all 5B.
Well, that's, that's, I don't think, I think, I think that's clear. I didn't raise 5B because I didn't have any questions about our recommendations there. It all seemed typically clear.
I think that has more to do with the adjacent district.
I do mean 4A?
That's allowed by special exception.
Um, I'm not sure. I don't know what you mean.
Was it then you?
That was the third.
There was a third option?
Yeah, does it also apply to 4A, so like, we wouldn't want a a hair place opened up on, you know, Essex, say, if there was one at the corner of Essex and Windsor, you know, in the 4A district where they're actually allowed? That would actually superglide back into downtown. Is that?
I would think you would actually, like, mitigate for those problems more so if you if the universe where they're allowed is larger, like, yes, if you, if you provided them everywhere, but then some this narrow band, you're allowed to, like, have them, then that would become like barber shop valley. But to the extent that, like, you have a broader area where they're more generally allowed, I don't, I don't know that you would necessarily get barber shops everywhere throughout the, the rest of that space.
So does that mean it should include all of 5A and 4A?
That's, so that's why I was saying, like, that's why it makes the most sense to me that it is limited to the corridors.
I see, and then the rest is more.
You can do it in 5A and give it through conditional use or whatever it is in.
For it.
Right, but I will, I'm not, you know, we've already, we've discussed it at length, so I'm not going to, like, believe at that point, if ever, if like the general kind of, you know.
So Jennifer, you, were you implying later on that you think it should apply to all of 5A? Is that?
Well, I was, I was starting to go there, but I think, I think probably not, really.
Anyone, anyone like to argue, make a case for us to consider that it goes to all of 5A?
Yeah.
Please do.
You should comply to all of 5A.
Why is that?
Well, I mean, the goal here is to, is to limit the adjacency of what we consider the less desirable uses. So the, the boundaries that we drew now many years ago between two zoning districts are kind of immaterial in my mind. It's all part of the town. And it's whether the, whether the next smoke shop winds up in the 4A district, doesn't mean anything to me. It's the question of having one at all.
Well, that's, that's, that's an example that may not be the best because those wouldn't be allowed in 5A or 4A. Can you think of another example?
How about adult bookstore?
Also not allowed.
What is, what is a laundress?
Then we're talking about nail salons, barber shops.
Okay, let's talk about nail salon.
Okay, great, nail salon, so there you go.
So what's the difference if it's across the line to 4A?
Well, right now, we say there, it's okay as long as it is in the area where they're allowed by conditional use. And the reason we did that is because we wanted to give property owners of some of the older buildings more options for how they could use their building economically.
But there are other commercial activities that they could have other than ones that we consider to be in this sort of nether reach, another, another lands of commerce.
I don't know that that was the logic as presented, though. If it was, then that would make sense, but I thought the logic as presented was that there were certain commercial uses that we're fine with, but we don't want them dominating, like, the active use corridors.
We don't want it to be saturated with them.
Right.
Yeah, I'd be, I mean, I would myself characterize it a little differently, but the 5B uses, like, axletter joints and things like that. Food stores or whatever, of kinds of things that we do sort of want to keep that back. But I think it was more of a concern about just the oversaturation and clustering of certain things that would prevent other types of businesses from getting a chokehold. Sort of like an invasive, like. Anyway, that's how I characterize it. And so, do we really, is it a matter, do we care that these things cluster on, just on Haveford and North North Avenue? Do we care that they cluster all through 5A, or do we care that they cluster through 5A and 4A? Does it really matter? At what level does it really matter?
Well, we still have a distance, don't we?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
We still have a distance. I mean, isn't that written into this anyway?
Well, that's what I'm asking, is this distance apply only to Haveford and North North?
It makes sense to, to route 5A. I mean, the distance is the guiding rule.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, like, in my notes, it's not clear whether people wanted that to be 5A or just Haveford and North North or include 4A, and that's what I'm trying to clarify, what the sense is. Yeah, the distance is the question that we're trying to apply here.
I'm not sure that this really matters, but I'll just say it is that if we apply the distance to 4A and 5A, it might be more a matter of what is the experience of a salon in a in 4A versus the experience of a salon in 5A. I mean, is that, are they comparable experiences? Are the services offered the same? Are, you know, like, and I think we get into this granular level of trying to pick apart the pieces. I would say probably include 4A, include 5A, strike the distance and
and see what happens.
let the pieces fall where they, fall where they may.
I'm sorry, so the distance is the whole point of this, so that would, they put basically, put you in the camp that we don't actually need to have this ordinance?
No, no, it would be like the what distance did we say, like, three hundred or three hundred feet?
Right.
Yeah, and it would just be three hundred feet across a larger area of land.
Okay. Can I ask a quick question? The, because I don't know the answer, the when we, in the world we, when we changed to limit offices on the ground floor, where does that apply?
I know. So general office, professional office, medical office, and financial institutions are permitted anywhere in 5A except the first floor facing Haveford Avenue. Most of them are permitted by special exception in 4B. Some of them are permitted by conditional use in 4A and just professional office is permitted by conditional use in 3B and 3C.
So, to me, if we're allowing offices in all those other places, as much or less desirable commercial use, just to me personally, than like a barber shop or a nail salon? Because we're, I mean, it's just, the only people that use those offices is people that know one of those offices. So I don't know why we would then treat commercial uses that actually serve people in the community more restrictive than the way we're treating offices.
But what if it's a WeWork? What if it's, you know, the and you've got a coffee shop and a WeWork and it's working, like, it's, you've got.
I still don't know why we would treat it more restrictive than we would treat offices.
Well, WeWork's not at the table, it's more, why would we treat a barber shop differently than a office space? So WeWork is a good example of that. Why would we, we be more restrictive for the barber shop? Than a WeWork.
Why, why would we be preferential to a, a, a white collar working space than to a potentially service industry oriented working space?
Yeah, I mean, I, well, I, I don't want to state my opinion yet, but.
Well, I mean, those are restricted in ground floor because they're not retail.
But that's the logic behind the, that's the stated logic behind the
Dispersion.
The dispersion. It's because they're not active. The retail uses.
I thought it was just because we didn't want to have repetitive uses.
That was.
Retail repetitive uses.
But I mean, offices are repetitive use theoretically.
Yeah, but if it's in one of those other districts which you talked about.
Well, it's allowed, you can do it in 5A.
It's allowed anywhere in 5A except on the first floor facing Haveford.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing wrong with that.
But facing Haveford, right? But we were, we.
It's only Haveford, though, that's odd.
I guess, I guess the.
Only Haveford.
Yeah, it should be all the, all.
I guess, we could see, I mean, we think of Haveford and to some degree North North Avenue as the main shopping streets, right, and so I guess I'd like something articulate. What is, what is, what is the damage to our district if we have you know, two barbers on Forest or two barbers on Essex, or a barber on Essex and Forest, because it's within three hundred feet of each other? Is that, how is that detrimental to the district?
That's, it's not.
I don't see that it is. I can see why having three barbers in, you know, between North North and, and Forest on the south side of the street or the north side of the street prevents the diversity of business we'd like, but I don't know why having more on other streets. Because that's sort of meant to be a place where we can have things that aren't really appropriate for, you know, for the main the main retail street. So I don't know what they can, I mean, I, myself, I have a hard time making a case for this to apply off of Haveford and North North, I guess that's what I'm saying. Again, I think it's just too, too interventionary for purposes that I don't really think are.
I can see it that way, too. I mean, I can, I can see it both ways, but yeah, I mean, I don't.
If you got a, if you got a, I mean, I think we really want to manage Haveford and to some degree North North as well, but if you've got a, like, a retail, like, the, the, they have a Forest building, right? The, the place next to that keeps changing. Well, if the, if the property owner can make the rent by renting to a barber while there's a barber across the street, what, how does that hurt the vendor? You know, I, I don't know, I mean, I don't, I don't understand, I, I don't understand the case for that. So I guess I, personally, I'm falling victim. Yes, Haveford and North North, North North, but not not the rest of 5A. It's just too micromanaging, and I'm not sure what the benefit of it is.
I agree.
I mean, do you guys still hold out for all of 5A?
I don't think I, I feel that strongly about it, that I could go, I could go with just North North and Haveford.
About you, Jim, can you live with that?
Yeah, I can live with it. It's funny about something else.
Well, last question I have, and then we're done with this topic, is, is there any refinement to the list of proposed uses to be separated? And I put that on this because, Michael, you've made the case that the, you know, some of the categories are actually very, have micro-discrimination in them. They might serve different clientele or have different specialties, should I say. Just like some barbers are better at serving men and some are better at serving women. I don't know that that is literally actually differentiated. I don't know, is a hair salon is that a different land use from a barber in our code?
Oh, that's a good question.
And then, as you pointed out, Michael, some barbers specialize in different clientele, you know, so.
So it depends on how the, so those would all fall under one use, which is personal care, but it depends on how the ordinance is written.
Right.
If it's saying one personal care use cannot be within a certain distance of another personal care use, you're going to have issues. If it's written, I don't know, you're going to have to redefine these. If it's written more narrowly, you're going to have to define these other things, like, what is a barber? What is a hair salon? What is a nail salon? Exactly, and that's all possible to do, which is all has, could have to be part of the ordinance if you're going to try to only separate them from similar things. And then Michael raised up the interesting point last time of, like, what about a hair salon that caters to, like, black African-American textured hair, like, do we want to prevent that from opening? If there's already a hair salon that has mostly white clientele, you know, like, that's not ideal, right?
That's what I meant by, the business might have the same land use, but it might be differentiated in terms of its market, in terms of its clientele or its specialty. You know, like, you might, many businesses might have that, kind of. So, I guess I wanted to, so let's review what was it mostly hair, nail salon, and personal service? Is that what it was proposed?
I proposed a list that included those in addition to dry cleaner and laundromat.
Potentially, I think, dollar stores.
They were talking about it, which isn't a differentiated use in your ordinance.
I'm going to have to go to smoke, one of the smoke shops on the left, right? So dollar, dollar stores, yeah, that's tricky how you even define that. But laundromats, dry cleaners, nail salons, barber shops. Hair salons.
Are those, is that the right list of uses? Are those, is that the right list of uses? Should office uses be on there? What else is permitted in this district? Funeral homes.
Well, let's be, I mean, let's, I think they're thinking about things quite, momentum, even from a market point of view.
Yeah, you're right. You're not likely to get a rash of funeral institutions opening in 5A district.
Does anyone have any objections to that list? If we were able to define hair salons, nail salons, barber shops, laundromats, dry cleaners, and dollar stores, would you be okay with having them on the list? That's, let's just assume we can define them. That's, that's what councils ask for. So, does anyone have any concerns about any of those items, or are there others that are likewise economically viable that we might need to be concerned about? Do you have any concerns about that list? Because you, you've raised them a lot.
No, I think, I mean, like, I think a, a lot of my concerns I would have had about that list are kind of resolved by the question of corridor.
Okay, right, that solves all the questions that I've got about that. Fifteen, nine thirty, I would like to ask Chloe if you wouldn't mind tabling everything else, if you don't mind.
I don't mind at all.
So at that, then we will skip the third, so we can comment. And we'll move to the next topic, final call for public comment. Any matter?
I have a question on dispersion.
Yeah, okay.
That Lower Merion does not have a dispersion ordinance, and they won't. Will the Narberth ordinance be affected by placement of businesses in Lower Merion? Like on Montgomery Avenue, or possibly on Narberth Ave, on the bridge, you know, if there were, there were barber shops there. They could have three in a row or even just one. Would that prevent one from opening in Narberth?
It depends on how the ordinance is written.
Yeah.
Which, it's not drafted yet, and I understand that the solicitor's drafting it, but if you have input on that, you should definitely let it know.
I'm just saying something to think about because you could, you know, you could back yourself into a corner about what can be opened in Narberth based on something that happens in another business that is not governed by your ordinance.
I think the solicitor would have to find a way out to the situation where by virtue of the placement of things in Lower Merion, it would de facto prevent something from locating in Narberth. Because I think the way state law works is we have to allow within Narberth a place for any of its legal use, right? And so if, if we were to say, okay, all of our ammo shops go on Montgomery Avenue, but just to some quirk, Lower Merion had them all spaced on Montgomery Avenue, therefore, they had, they couldn't meet the dispersion rules, that would in effect leave us with no place for ammo shop. So the solicitor would have to figure out a way around that. That would be the implication of that, I think. So I think, like, from one point of view, what you're saying, suggesting is a good idea, but it could lead to problems if, if there wasn't, you know, because the way it would work now is there already has to be one for other things to disperse. So you're providing that, that opportunity, right?
And there's a quick, and this might not need to go anywhere, the, the ordinance might take care of it. But I think that Chloe had mentioned something interesting before that I didn't even know was an option. And maybe if council's interested in it, I guess they could think of it as a phase three that makes that more bulletproof, right? But it sounds like there's an option whereby Narberth can plan with Lower Merion to allocate however much that strip would be to some other Lower Merion area where they may have already kind of provided for that amount of thing. And then we could actually just move those away from Montgomery Avenue theoretically if Lower Merion agrees to it. In more comprehensive cases.
That'd be a fun conversation.
Right, I don't know, but I mean, like, if you're Lower Merion, why would you, like, just, I mean, I'm thinking about it. If, if they've already prohibited it on their side of Montgomery Avenue, and we've said the only place that this can go is on the other side of Montgomery Avenue, they may actually have some sort of incentive to be like, yeah, you're right, we don't want to, like.
Right, and they already have to allow it somewhere in Lower Merion. They don't have to allow any more than they currently do. They just have to allow it anywhere. And the requirement to be able to throw those uses to Lower Merion is that you have a joint comprehensive plan with Lower Merion township. So that's a future item. You could consider, you know, if you wanted to do a joint plan, joint comprehensive plan with Lower Merion, that would legally allow you to get rid of any use that they allowed anywhere in Lower Merion, basically.
Well, so that might be a one I figure.
This is not a tomorrow activity, but it is something to know about and something to consider for the future.
But it's worth asking everyone, the legal question aside that I just raised, do you, like, Jim sort of raised an idea. Do you think it's a good idea that our dispersion ordinance, if it were feasible, would take into account what's in Lower Merion? Like, a nail salon, or an ammo shop, or either in 5A or 5B? So should, would we ask the solicitor to consider how this dispersion ordinance could take into account any of these uses that happens to be in Lower Merion without getting us into it either?
Yeah.
Real legal battles or psychological warfare? Okay, so last event too. Okay, so any other public comment about any matter that could potentially come before the planning commission? All right, anyone have a motion to adjourn? I saw. Jim moves. Is there a second to adjourn?
Second.
Heidi's second. I have a long paper adjourned. Remember, we have no meeting in August.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, I need to start planning some big motions.